Okay, it's 5:30 PM. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wassa School District. Please scan my pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, the first item that we have is a resolution of commendation for Melissa Piett. Melissa Piett is a district-wide assistive and instructional technology integration specialist and was nominated for the resolution of commendation by John Uding, Director of Technology and Media Services. Melissa was named an Apple Distinguished Educator from Apple. She is one of only three in the state of Wisconsin to receive this distinction and joins 550 other educators from around the world in the class of 2019. Mr. Uding states, "Melissa Piett has been a highly distinguished educator in the Wassa School District for many years. Her passion for meeting the needs of all learners with all available tools opened previously closed doors to learning while empowering staff to be innovative in the delivery of instruction. Apple's recognition of Melissa as an Apple Distinguished Educator is evidence of her ability to innovate, create, and transform instruction for all. It is also confirmation of what the Wassa School District has witnessed for many years, a distinguished educator who cares passionately about learners and staff members." At this time, I would seek a motion to award a resolution of commendation to Melissa Piett.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. If Melissa would please come forward.
Not gonna do it on the side.
Well, congratulations. I'd like to award this to you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Got a little photo right here.
(Laughter) (Inaudible) And I'd like one more, please. Thank you.
Great. Melissa's gonna stay for a minute because there's one more recognition.
So we also have recognitions for Professional Learning Academy graduation. We have Melissa Piett receiving Leadership Academy via teaching.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. And I think I have just one more. (Applause) We're gonna have Amy J- J- I'm sorry, Jaglinsky from Rim Mountain Elementary. Is Amy here?
She's here yet.
Okay.
No Amy?
Maybe. Okay, that was a Wassa School District Apple Academy Highly Qualified Teacher. Carrie Uding, John Marshall Elementary, receiving the Personalized Learning Academy, Highly Qualified Teacher.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Larissa Zam- Zampolis from Grant Elementary. Is Larissa here?
She's here.
Receiving Personalized Learning Academy, Highly Qualified Teacher. School's really out, huh? And also Laura Morris, who is actually ill today but is receiving a leadership via teaching, and it says fourth parenthetically. So Chris, do you- the fourth?
Pardon?
Oh, and it's her fourth.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Okay, so I guess let's give all these teachers a round of applause.
Photo up.
One more. (Inaudible) Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll move to public and student comment, first for items appearing on the agenda and then for items not on the agenda. Okay. the agenda, and that is Michelle Ashman.
Yes. Thank you.
So Michelle, you'll be permitted five minutes to speak.
Okay.
Ms. Peck will hold the time for you. It is a strict five minutes, and please state your name and your address at the start, please.
My name's Michelle Ashman. My address is 315 Weston Avenue, and last month, there was a public statement made of the opinion that EEA is failing. This month, I'd like to make the statement that I have a different matter of opinion. So, prior to my daughter Bailey's enrollment at EEA, she was not thriving in the public school system due to intense bullying. As a sudden and critical measure, we kept her truant until she was admitted to EEA, and they were then able to meet our need and enroll our daughter, which resulted in a one-day occurrence only. Today, she's a graduate of Edgewood College in Madison, Wisconsin, with a pre-med neuroscience degree, and I'm convinced that her postgraduate success is due to her positive experience at EEA. Our son Sawyer is dyslexic. While in the public school system, he was two grades behind in his reading ability and only able to advance grade for grade, unable to close the gap. After enrolling him in EEA, they diligently worked with his IEP plan and adapt and were able to adapt and be flexible to his development needs as dictated. Sawyer was able to close the gap in his reading ability, then go on to graduate from EEA a year early with honors under their charter design. Throughout the course of my children's attendance, under the current format, their needs were met in a timely fashion. As parents, if we had concerns, our needs were met in a timely fashion. As members of the governing council, we were privy to the mechanics of EEA and did not find any deficiencies in the current design. To the best of our knowledge, in this capacity, we also observed that the staff's needs were met in a timely fashion. The benefit of a charter school design is that they are able to create a learning environment that meets the needs of their student body outside of the basic design of public education. There's also the ability to be flexible and to adapt as the needs of the student bodies changes. As a result of this design, the staff must also be flexible and have the ability to adapt, with the majority of EEA's academic staff quite adept at and will even exceed the requirements of the charter in meeting the needs of their students. This goes beyond academic needs. For the most part, all staff at EEA Learning Academy is completely committed to this design, and it works for the student body, the staff, and their families without fail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like a half hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, and this is to approve the consent agenda. I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion carries with great gratitude for the donations to the district. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, this is Old and Recurring Business. We have a number of motions, and these were items that were discussed at length in previous meetings. So while we're going through them, it might seem fast, but certainly they've been discussed at length. You can go to YouTube and find those meetings if you have more interest in those conversations. Okay, the first is from the Education Operations Committee of the whole Meal Price Recommendations for the 2019-2020 Year, and action is requested. I'm seeking a motion to approve an overall price increase of 10 cents for lunch for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Second, Recommendation for the Preliminary 2019-2020 Budgets. And if there are any updates from the administration on any of these, please feel free to weigh in. Hearing none, I'm seeking a motion to approve of the preliminary budgets as presented in order to proceed with 2019-2020 expenditures committed to before final budgets are approved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Okay, on to Item Number Three, WIAA Membership Renewal for 2019-2020. I'm seeking a motion to approve of the continued support of the Wassa School District remaining a member of the WIAA for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next is the Wassa School District Employee Handbook Update. Seeking a motion to approve revisions of the 2019-2020 Wassa School District Employee Handbook Update as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, next is the Teacher Compensation and Professional Development Guidelines. I'm seeking a motion to approve the foundational components on which to develop a new Wassa School District Compensation Model.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we're moving on to new business, and the first is a presentation on the Achievement Gap Reduction Program.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask my colleagues, yes, please. Your colleagues, that would be great.
You ready to join me? This would be six.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of members of the elementary schools that participate in the Achievement Gap Reduction Program. We have six elementary schools in the Wassa School District who are awarded five-year contracts to participate in this program, or sunsetting for completing year three. Thank you. In a few moments, each elementary principal at an AGR school will share with you their performance indicators and their successes that they experienced with their students this year at the end of the school year. So the AGR program was established to improve student achievement, and as a district, when we participate, each AGR school then is awarded funding from the state. As a district, we received this year approximately $1.8 million to offset the cost of hiring in additional staff to maintain lower class sizes. So that's one of our indicators that we implement in the Wassa School District. We maintain 18 students or less to one educator, except with Thomas Jefferson, where I have a team teaching opportunity in second grade. We can then have up to 30 students with two teachers in that classroom. We also provide instructional coaching, provided at these sites by Amy McGovern, Lynn Strialo, and Darren Kaplan. They are reading and math specialists. And then each school, again, will have in kindergarten through third grade, small class sizes. They will maintain a focus on mathematics and reading, and then we use a specific screener called the Range Lab Screener three times a year to measure progress, and along the way continue to focus, monitor how the students are achieving. At this time, each campus principal will share with you highlights specifically in the area of mathematics, because strategically, this year, that was a goal, not only as a district but at our AGR schools. So you have in your pocket or in your board book both the reading and math data, but we like to focus on math.
Good evening, board members. We'll start with Franklin, and we'll go- you'll have a chance to look at our reading data there. We're gonna go right to our math data, and as you all have seen previously, this is the way of reporting out at this time, and our goal is to move students out of the red, which is the below 10 percentile, from into yellow and then into the green area. And as you can see, this year, we had really nice success with our kindergarten and first grade. The- our efforts are starting to pay off, I believe. We still have work to do with second and our third grade, and are never satisfied until every child is meeting and working at grade level. So we'll continue to work on those efforts. Some of the innovative things that our kindergarten and first grade teachers tried was some additional collaboration, some, even though they're still really young, they had some of the kindergarten and first grades trading rooms and doing some partly on grade level, and then some grade-wide interventions amongst the core math time. So that was different for this year. So we're gonna keep working hard and make sure that as those students move to second and third grade, that they continue that increase in their achievement.
So Libby, are there some outside factors that aren't gonna be clear to us on this data? Because looking at third grade, for instance, the percent in fall to the percent in spring, and that kind of- I know you're only talking about math tonight, but we see that also with the reading in that class.
Yes, and our third graders this spring, winter and spring, had quite a few students move in and move out, so a number of students are represented there, and we've mentioned that other times we've presented. And then also, just it was a smaller group of children, so we're closer to about 48 or 49 students. So as we've said in the past, too, just one or two students can really move those percentages. But yes, we- it looks like the yellow, you know, in some of the grades, we moved students from yellow to green, but then didn't mark our red area at all. So that is, we're, you know, of course, really looking forward to our new math curriculum and some additional training to continue moving forward.
And the target changes also, right? It gets a little bit more difficult.
Yes, it does.
So we're not giving the same test three times.
Yes, correct.
Is there a way to look at the data almost in, I guess, two different groups, where you have those students that you have the entire year, and then subtract out your move ins and move outs? Because, and I know this isn't the case, but I think it could be a relatively easy thing to do, to say, well, we have kids coming in and kids coming out, so we went from 62 to 36, right? What is the real impact that we have with the kids that are there in September through June, or September through May?
Right.
Is that possible?
Yeah, this is something I've been thinking about, that, you know, we have recording requirements, and that's part of why we do this every year, right? And I assume that we have to record it in this format. Could we get maybe an executive summary, just a one paragraph per school to explain those kind of things? How many kids are moving in? How many kids are moving out? We've heard before, third grade is a particularly difficult time developmentally, curriculum-wise, so you often see a dip in third grade. And then, you know, whatever, other factors are important, because, you know, just with the raw numbers one more time, as in every year I've been on the board, we don't know what we're looking at.
I was curious about the numbers, K3 at least from Lincoln. And so overall, kids moving in and moving out, we had 68 transitions, which when you think, that's a quarter of our school. But if a student comes in, that takes time to set up that classroom again, set up the expectations, you start from the base. Kindergarten, I had nine students move in and seven move out in the year, so that's 16 transitions for kindergartners. First grade, I had six move in and six move out, which is a transition of 12. Second grade, eight and eight, so 16. And then in third grade, we had 15 students move in and nine move out, so that was 24 transitions that most- that impacted those kids.
Yeah, we were alerted, I think, Jane, it might have been one of something you sent to the board, maybe a year ago, about the problem churn.
That was the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel article. I had sent that.
Right, and, okay, you sent that, that it just, yeah, that if happens, whatever, the kids move, they get sent backwards, and so having that kind of information would be very helpful, and then some sense of, you know, well.
Well, it impacts their peers, too, that are there from September through May, because they experience 16 of their friends leaving or coming in, they don't know, are my friends gonna be there tomorrow? Are they not gonna be there tomorrow? So there's a lot that goes on, I think.
Yeah, it would just, I guess, to me, and I don't even know if you can just sample something, but if you start out with two sections of third grade, I don't know how many you have in a section, 23, 24?
18.
18, no, 36, okay, so you have 10 vote, you have 26, small sample size, I get it, not statistically significant, but what happens to those 26 that you started with over those nine months? To me, that would just be an interesting data point to see across the board, really.
And the commentary of the teacher would be helpful, too.
I guess, the long and the short of it, for us, would be you're telling us where you see problems, and then what you're going to address the problems, and that seems to be, you know, that's not the reporting mechanism that you need to provide, but to be the one that'd be useful to us.
And I was just gonna recommend that another deeper level of analyzing that data might be important, to take a look at the amount of students in and out. Are they moving between our own schools? Because that's another reason that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, because we can then say within a five to 10 day period of time, if they come from, let's say Franklin to Jefferson or Jefferson to Jones, they're receiving the same high-quality education, and we can guarantee that it's within a certain time period, so they should be within a certain pacing and/or scope and sequence expectations for that grade level. So that'd be another way to look at the data, too, is, is the mobility really internal, or what percentage are we seeing from all its like districts as well? And see what that might tell us.
And if it's internal, probably those two teachers are speaking to each other.
Absolutely, yes.
That would certainly be helpful. And just to go back to that article, you know, Wassa School District was reported because it was demonstrated to have a higher turn rate, and one of the things that was reported in the article is that if a student moves twice in one year, they can fall a grade level behind. So if we are able to identify, well, at least these students are staying within the district, then they won't hopefully fall within that.
Absolutely.
All right, so we'll move on to Jones, and like Libby, we had our reading information presented there, and I'll just speak briefly to it. We, in kindergarten and second grade, we saw a decline a lot more than what I would have, would have liked to see between winter and spring. We went up between fall and winter very nicely, and then something happened between winter and spring, and I, you know, I know what we did as a staff at Jones to try and help the students with that, those test-taking strategies. We started talking about it with the data leadership team, and then we talk about it with the staff about how we can help prepare our kiddos to be successful as they're, as they're taking different assessments. But it's definitely something that we will continue to work on for the 2019-2020 school year. Moving on to math, we saw some really nice gain from kindergarten, from winter to spring at kindergarten, and pretty much maintained at first grade, went up a percentage point. Second grade and third grade are a celebration. Second grade, we went up, well, actually kindergarten, too, we went up at least 10 percentage points with our kiddos. At third grade, we went up 20 percentage points, and I have to speak again to those strategies. We started working in December and really started hitting hard those different test-taking strategies that we could work on with our students to help them be successful with, no matter what assessment they were taking, whether it was the universal assessments that they were taking, whether it was a summative assessment they were taking within the classroom, or maybe even, you know, helping students be successful when they're taking their, or when the students are conducting formative assessments with them as well. So I'm pretty pleased with the Jones math data. Overall, K5, I can sit here and tell you that over the course of the school year from spring, or from fall to spring, we saw 42% of our students at GD Jones, and I don't have the data separated out like Colleen did to say which ones were move-ins and transfers out, but 42% of our kiddos moved from the red and the yellow into the green, into the proficient age. So we're working hard, and we're gonna continue that work, and then we're, you know, we're gonna take the strategies that we're using with our math and continue that with the literacy as well.
So how does, whatever you did, and this is just an ignorant question on my part, right? So you, you're all AGR schools, right? You have kids moving in, kids moving out.
Yep.
You took your third grade math, I'm not sure if my number's right here, 58 to 70, and those at a 25, 25th percentile and above.
From fall to spring, yep.
Which is fantastic. And we have another, the example you just went through, and again, this is not a finger pointing exercise, it's just a, what the data says. Same grade level, same quote-unquote demographics, some kids moving in, some kids moving out, we go from 62 to 36 with the same curriculum, okay? Something is different. Something is going on.
That's a great question, Pat. When I sat here in front of you in February, I do remember speaking to the point that at that point in time, from the beginning of the year until February, we did have a lot of ins and outs at GD Jones. There weren't as many ins and outs at third, at third grade as there were from February until now as there were from September to February. So I think that that could possibly speak to a little bit of what Colleen was saying about the impact on the peers with all the transitions. We didn't have quite as many as we did that first half of the school year. I have no data to support that.
No, I'm with you, but, I mean, Andrea, if I'm you, I'm taking her by the hand, I'm taking her by the hand, I'm sitting you guys down, saying, okay, talk, right? Do something, because the data says.
And we do.
Right, but I mean, you know, very specifically, and if it is an issue of transitioning in and out, then we should have a strength, a better strategy for dealing with incoming and outgoing students. I don't know what that is, but if that's the reason, if that's the driver, then let's do something differently, because this data's been consistent.
And I think, though, Pat, the important piece to remember to look at is, are they transferring between campuses, right here within the Wassa School District, which would support that guaranteed and viable curriculum that we are providing to our students? Or is a higher percentage of those students coming from outside of the Wassa School District?
Absolutely.
Not using the same curriculum, things like that, so.
Okay, no, I get it, but that's outstanding.
The other thing I'm sitting here thinking about is, it takes five to seven years for a teacher to really hone their craft to be, to be an outstanding educator. It just takes that long to understand classroom management, et cetera. It would be interesting to note how many people in this testing are new teachers, because, you know, as we look every year about how many new teachers we add, are some of the schools getting more new teachers than others? And that's a lot to compensate for. I think that should be part of our little, you know, hey, this year, I had six new people in this area, and they're fine teachers, but it takes a while. And I think that's pretty impactful, too, where, you know, a lot of, a lot of parents wanna select their, their school by the experience the teachers have.
Yep.
So I think that's, and I think we do a great job with professional development and things that we're doing, but it does take a while.
It does. Teresa, it does take a while. I can sit here off the top of my head and say to you, at kindergarten level, I have, you know, a classroom teacher who's her third year into it, I have a classroom teacher her second year transferring within the building but different grade levels, you know, so that's an impact as well. Second grade, I had a second-year teacher and a veteran teacher, but again, switching grade levels. So it's, it's just how to provide the support to them, not only from me, but from their colleagues as well during their weekly POC meetings that they're having.
That would be remiss if I don't follow to your comment and say, another positive to relooking at the size of our elementary schools is when each year, we have to look at our staffing plan, and if due to a decrease in enrollment, we have to move teachers around, we still maintain them within maybe the same building or moving to other buildings. They're moving from a different grade, so even if they have, let's say, six to eight years' experience at kindergarten, and now all of a sudden, we don't have a need for three kindergarten teachers, but we go to two, they might have to go to another grade. So it's, you know, essentially, the content and the standards continue then to be different for them, so I think that is something that we should continue to talk about as administration with our board, is that, that's something that we're really living, that's our reality, and it's internal changes that potentially could also be-
So it's, it's just how to provide the support to them, not only from me, but from their colleagues as well during their weekly POC meetings that they're having.
That would be remiss if I don't follow to your comment and say, another positive to relooking at the size of our elementary schools is when each year we have to look at our staffing plan. And if due to a decrease in enrollment, we have to move teachers around, we still maintain them within maybe the same building or moving to other buildings. They're moving from a different grade. So even if they have, let's say, six to eight years' experience at kindergarten and now all of a sudden we don't have a need for three kindergarten teachers, but we go to two, they might have to go to another grade. So it's, you know, essentially the, the content and the standards continue then to be different for them. So I think that is something that we should continue to talk about as administration with our board, is that, that's something that we're really living, that's our reality. And it's internal changes that potentially could also be impacting our students.
That's a really good point.
Emma?
I think you will.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
And certainly, Cassie has moved on to math, but certainly you can take a peek at our reading data. I'd like to point out there, I think there was some significant work and growth that occurred at literacy, or in the area of literacy across all K-five grade levels at Grant. Of course, you don't see grades four and five reflected here in this particular table. But I'm very proud of particularly the small percentage of students that we have at each respective grade level scoring below the tenth percentile. And we've really focused a lot of significant effort there to ensure that we keep those percentages low. And we continue to, to be doing the right work and having the right conversations. So in many ways, this data is, is affirmation of having done the right things and doing the right work and working on the right work. Moving on to math, we too saw a decrease in percentage of students scoring at or above the twenty-fifth percentile in second or third grade. It's interesting because I kept stopping myself and it seemed like someone then spilled the words that I was going to say. So all of the things that we've talked about already, I feel as though have contributed to some of the decrease in levels of performance that we saw at grades two and grade three. We did have move-ins and move-outs, though not as significant as those Colleen highlighted. And I don't have specific numbers for those grade levels. However, I do know, and I do know that I have two new teachers at grade three. And I have three sections at second grade and one of those teachers is a brand-new teacher. Upon conversations, having just completed educator effectiveness summary conferences with all of those staff members, had some very specific and reflective conversations around the work that was done in terms of how we were supporting students in need of intervention in the area of math. And I think there's significant growth that occurs in terms of being able to look back at the numbers, talk about the things that we didn't did well, and then look at the result of the impact that that had on student learning. That's part of this process. So though I can look at those decreases in performance, levels of performance at grade two and three and be disappointed, I don't think, again, this is one measure. And it's a very small number of minutes in a student's day on one day in the spring, one day in the winter, and one day in the fall. And certainly, we take a more comprehensive look at students as learners and their ability to be able to perform. So many of those teachers also indicated that they felt that this data doesn't necessarily reflect. For instance, they might've had one student who performed much lower than they felt they were capable of performing. So we certainly take a more comprehensive look than just this data. But this is, in my mind, this, this is where, this gives me guidance in terms of how I lead and how I support those teachers moving forward in terms of building their capacity, support those students that are in need of additional intervention.
Andrea, how often do this, this group meet, collaborate, exchange ideas on what's working, what's not working in their respective schools?
That's a great question. So this group being a subgroup of our overall elementary principal team, we meet monthly. Once a month, we meet for half of a day. We talk about curriculum, we talk about assessment. So that's full group conversation. As a team, I believe they informally meet at least once a month as well to follow up on that conversation or maybe break into smaller teams. And then I have an opportunity monthly to meet with the principals and we really dig down into their data. Each elementary principal, after a benchmark period, so of course it's referenced, fall, winter, and spring when we administered this test, they pull together for an entire day what we call a data day or a data dig. And so all members of a grade-level team and then others in the building, maybe a title teacher, special ed, EL get together and they analyze the data three times a year. Then they make plans to either enrich or intervene if a student needs more than just the core. So we have multiple layers of that support and conversation and coaching and mentoring among. Again, this is representative of about a third of our team.
Thanks.
I guess I'm up. All right, so I'd really like to focus on kindergarten level right there. Some very, very positive growth there. I guess I can attribute that to the, the kindergarten rotations that were implemented. And those have been very positive, nothing but positive feedback from the parents as well as the staff members that work in those areas. So very positive growth overall at Hawthorne Hills Elementary in, in reading. We have, we have great numbers for our spring there. And I'm pretty proud of the work that the interventionists have done and also the teachers. Does anyone have any questions over the reading?
So the rotations, they were implemented at the beginning of the academic year.
Correct, yes. I just didn't know if someone had, if someone had any other questions, so. All right, so for math, again, just some very, very strong growth at the kindergarten level. A little bit less at, at the, at the first and the third grade level. But overall, we've brought, we've brought our stats over to the above twenty-five percentile pretty swiftly there. I think that, you know, there's a lot to attribute to that, the math box, the technology that's implemented, those kinds of things. You're easily, you can easily differentiate learning at different levels with some of the technology that's involved in that. I think that's been very positive for growth. Also, the students are very motivated when they, when the technology is implemented. So they like to practice a lot more on the computers and iPads, so.
All right, moving on to Lincoln, I can repeat what Lynn has said here in terms of the kindergarten rotations. They seem to be very beneficial, quite a significant growth in kindergarten in terms of reading. Grade two, also a lot of growth. Grade one and grade three stay somewhat consistent with at least near the seventieth percentile. In the area of math, again, I was actually really proud of the third grade because they had such a transition in moving in and out. They really focused their win time this year, the what individuals need on, on math versus on the reading. And I think that's showing in their scores, that, which you focus on gets better. So I think the third grade team really worked, worked well as a team to come up with some strategies for their students. Again, we tried to remain near the seventieth percentile.
Well, good evening, everybody. Cleaning up again today. We're really excited about our progress at Thomas Jefferson and so proud of all of the work that goes into the numbers for us and everyone else. We can specifically go over anything that you'd like. I'm just really proud, we're moving kids up out of the red, we're moving kids into the green and having a lot of success. And that's, I think there were a lot of great questions there. Pat, Tricia, Teresa, like that's what I really love about my job, is it's, we're dealing with people, little people, big people, and all sorts of sizes in between. But there's a lot of variables there, kids moving in and out, you know, parents and in home situations, teachers moving in and out, and all those kind of things. I just love the complexity of that for my job and the teachers and working with everyone in our building. So if you look at math as well, we've had some tremendous growth and success. And I look forward to building on that.
Mr. Johnson, these are outstanding. These are fantastic. I mean, you have what could be considered positive direction in almost every category in every grade, whether that's a decrease in those that are below tenth or those, you know. Hats off to you and your team, this is, this is amazing.
We have a special group of educators and I really love working with them. And we had a lot of celebrations today that the kids were leaving and we also had a lot of like hugs and tears. And it's a great place to work and we work really hard. It's a great group of teachers.
That, that's good to hear. I would also say, don't shortchange yourself on the leadership it takes to kind of bring a good group of teach, a good group of teachers together. I'm sure that that's reflected in here as well. So again, this is really, really nice.
Thank you.
Andrea, do I remember correctly that last year at this time, we also had really, importantly, increasing numbers at Thomas Jefferson, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
And thus we might wanna, I mean, I know you all are doing this anyway, but looking at and figuring out what's working.
Another question I have is, do you guys do any data mapping from those? What are the, the behavior forms, the B R? I only hear
B T F tracking.
Yeah, yeah, B T F, that's what I hear about them from my kids, I won't say why. So is there any correlation or data mapping done between the B T Fs and classes that perform either at an exceptionally high level or perhaps see a decrease?
Well, B T F has a lot of different flavors.
Right.
They can be quite severe or relatively insignificant, just documentation, for instance. So that is a tough correlation because there is such a variety of the B T Fs, majors, minors. And then within those, there's a large span. Obviously, behavior has, sometimes can be a disruption to the classroom environment and thus would be impactful there.
Right.
One of the greatest correlations that we have from research is attendance. So to your point, I think that would be a really powerful correlation tool to use there. But certainly, behavior does impact our classes.
Yeah, no, you, you make some, you make a couple of good points there actually that I didn't think of, the severity of those B T Fs. I'm just thinking of, I've heard from many teachers, right, that one or two students who have a tendency to disrupt a classroom, right, for an extended period of time can really consume their time.
Yeah.
And I, you just wonder if there's any
And there's a difference too, whether a student is qualified for special education servicing
Right.
to get some additional help or if the classroom teacher is on his or her own to manage that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And in response to, do we look at that data? We have a data management system called EduClimber where we house all of our academic and behavior data. And so this year, many of, none of these principals as well as our colleagues are creating data walls. So when they come together as teams, we're actually looking at either grade level or specific student data, but it's all the data because we know it's the whole child. So that opportunity to look at both the combination of academic and behavior data in a meeting, whether it is grade levels with a principal or our response intervention teams, they meet weekly, that is a tool that guides our conversations and we see all the data together on an individual child. Very useful.
Okay.
So we wanted to conclude, this is the end of the year, with some math celebrations. Each principal's going to highlight one thing that we have been implementing or would like to celebrate either at their school or within the district.
All right, so I'm gonna start. I'm really excited to share with you, classroom teachers are excited about the new math resource that has been adopted for this upcoming school year called Ready Classroom Math. Beginning in October of 2017, a group of thirty-three, I believe, comprehensive of administrators, specialists, and classroom teachers came together over the course of a few months and vetted a number of resources. And under six essential elements, teaching and learning, access and equity, curriculum assessment, professionalism, tools and technology, they were able to come up with, through conversations and from site visits and from just seeing the curriculum, they were able to choose Ready Classroom Math as the resource that would be used. Classroom teachers have already started a resource launch by attending launch sessions that are designed to provide an overview of student and teacher resources. They already have the teaching materials in their hands, so they're going to have this summer to go through them if they would like. Classroom teachers at Jones who attended, who have already attended the resource launch on June fourth and fifth, came back to Jones the next days and were very excited about what they had learned and excited about professional development opportunities that will continue into next, next school year and how we can use that resource to continue moving the learning forward in math with all of our kiddos.
And one of the professional development opportunities we had this year focused on number talks with, with students and really getting them thinking more flexibly about numbers. My first grade students are actually really funny. I was sitting in during a reading class and they were using some of the signs and signals that they used during the math. So they're carrying over their flexible thinking from the math numeracy over into other areas. But it's been a really good program. And when I look at the computation aspects of how students are doing in their AMES Web reports, it's showing some nice growth there. And students don't share out their thinking until everyone has had time to think. And then they talk about different ways to arrive at their calculations. So it's been a very good program. The technology integration's gonna continue. I said a little bit about that when I talked about my numbers. But, you know, differentiating, having them practice independently, but yet the teacher can still monitor their scores and how they're doing and what level they're working at, that's all gonna continue with the new, the new math, new math curriculum as well.
Response to intervention, we've got exciting progress going on, as you can see from our numbers. It has behavioral components, to your point, Pat, about behaviors disrupting our, our students' education. It's a tiered system for both academic and behavior that we meet weekly with our teams and teachers to talk about where kids are and how we can help them get to where they need to be. Some exciting things going on there is just the, the data mining tools that we have and assessments. We have a new assessment coming in next year, FastBridge, that will help us pinpoint data and really specifically and easily allow us to pull EL kids or, you know, transient populations or any kind of things that we're looking at, to be able to target those in a quicker timeframe so we can make the best gains possible. Other things that we're doing are like getting down to the individual standards for kids in performance instead of just, you know, in generalities, talking very specifically. And even things that we've been pushing this year is targeting advanced kids as well and moving everybody forward along the continuum. Sometimes we can be really focused on kids in the red when we want every kid to be successful. So those meetings have really disaggregated all the students out into growth patterns, so.
Oh, adding on to what Brent mentioned, the FastBridge is a new assessment tool that we will be launching. The trainers have been, had their first day of training and we're really excited about FastBridge. It stands for Formative Assessment for Teacher, or System for Teachers. It was developed and field-tested with teachers. And so it's gonna be, you know, our goal is to make sure that it's teacher-friendly and student-friendly. It has a tech component. We are, all teachers already know the probes that they'll be giving right away in the fall. And we'll be training for a good half-day with all of our staff when they return in August. So that is a real plus. It does, it has a growth component to it. How, in the past, we've used MAP as a MAP growth tool to make sure that we can, are not just tracking proficiency, but also how students are growing, which we've been talking about. And so we're excited about that component too, both math and reading with FastBridge.
Just so I understand that one, so that tool, and maybe it goes Brent to what you were talking about, that you're addressing a growth plan at each individual student level? So it may not, it may not be intervention, it could also be considered enrichment depending on where they're at?
Correct, yes, yes, good point. So there will be some proficiency benchmarks that we will also be tracking, but also the growth component also, yes.
Which I'm happy to hear about, because whenever I hear, I know this is an AGR presentation, but whenever I hear achievement gap, I always cringe a little bit because one of the ways to lessen the achievement gap is to not have the high-end expand or grow. And so I'm happy to hear that that's obviously not the plan.
I can just add a couple more points about FastBridge. So AMES Web, which is the data you have in front of you, that was a screening tool which we received this data, that was sunset, so that's the tool that we're then gonna supply. So AMES Web will no longer be used in the Wassa School District. Again, a comprehensive process over the last about a year and a half to vet and this FastBridge tool then will be the new tool. So always like to celebrate not putting something more on educators' plate, but in this case, the tool we've been using for eight years is no longer available. So we feel that through the process, FastBridge is really, as Libby said, it's a teacher-tested tool and it will be, it's been well-received thus far in some initial training. So we're looking forward to it and we appreciate the data it's gonna offer us as well.
And it's by design that professional learning communities is last on the list. And in the spirit of not putting one more thing on teachers' plates, we'll be entering year nine of implementation of professional learning communities across the district. And there will be, in support and in alignment with our strategic plan that's in the process of being developed and the achievement strength, there will be some work that our leadership, education leadership team will do with our administrative team throughout the course of this year at our monthly administrative team meetings in terms of kind of how we continue to move from the implementation of professional learning communities to highly effective professional learning communities. And those weekly opportunities that are built into teachers' daily schedules And those weekly opportunities that are built into teachers' daily schedules provide an opportunity for folks to dive more deeply into all of the bulleted items there that my colleagues have mentioned. So, in other words, we've created a platform for teachers to continue to learn and talk about individual students' needs and their response to the intervention or enrichment supports that we're providing, rather than just saying that on district-wide professional growth and development days or during your one faculty meeting per week, you're working on or you're diving more deeply into any one of those topics, the professional learning communities provide an opportunity for teachers within their grade level or within their department to continue that learning based on where their needs and interests or changes and needs for their students occur on a daily basis.
So in the inclusion, first and foremost, I'd like to look at my team here of AGR principals, but also recognize our elementary, middle, and high school principals for the work that they do as instructional leaders at their building. You asked excellent questions tonight, many of which if not all, they could answer because they are so intricately involved in advocacy for student learning. So I'd just like to thank them for all that they do in their leadership because effective leadership and effective teaching makes great learning that occurs in our schools. So thank you. And I'd like to ask you if you have any other questions before we conclude.
I have a question and in the interest of transparency, I had sent this to, or expressed it to Keith last week. And it is probably a question for Angie, but it is regarding enrollment in AGR schools. So if the classrooms are capped at eighteen and then you have new students that move into the district, how often are those students then being placed in AGR schools as opposed to non-AGR schools?
A live example from this year from the data that I understood that Mrs. Lloyd had collected two students who could not fit in. The numbers at Hawthorne Hills were actually placed at River View Elementary and River View is not an AGR school. Otherwise, through her department and her skill set, she placed all of their AGR students who would not fit in a classroom if it was capped into another AGR school.
Okay.
Much goes into those decisions, as I'm sure you can appreciate, transportation, understanding, if we can keep them close to where their neighborhood school is. So in the grand school, for example, sometimes Granton and Jefferson might be a paper, a good match if indeed there were space. So when we staff, we also take a look at that and all of these principals are very cognizant of advocating to say, if we go into staffing in this springtime period, let's make sure if we can to maintain a couple of spaces or spots in each of our grade levels, if not more, so that we can accommodate those ins and outs. So that answers, but certainly Mrs. Lloyd could give you more information when she returns.
I would just add to that too, that a student from an AGR area wouldn't necessarily be a child of poverty.
Not necessarily.
And we, and we certainly have kids in poverty in other schools that aren't in AGR schools too, so.
That's not the only concern. I have concerns about classroom equity though, the sizes.
Right.
And if we have classrooms of eighteen versus classrooms of twenty-six, that's a big difference.
Right, but the AGR and that small classroom size is, is based on the idea of the level of poverty throughout the whole school, not one individual student. So I'm just saying, you wouldn't necessarily, necessarily need to have a student from an AGR school have to be placed into an AGR school because the AGR and the funding for it and the research behind it is that the school level itself is high poverty as opposed to one student being in poverty.
I believe Lincoln is above eighty percent.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item eight B. This is, this is material that we discussed at the Education Operations Committee of the whole. So if, again, if it seems like we're going through it fast, we did discuss it in detail. If the administration has any updates for us on these upcoming motions, please feel free to interject at the appropriate time. Okay, the first is the School Forest Lodge project. And I'm seeking a motion to authorize the use of funds designated for school forest capital improvements for preliminary design of the School Forest Lodge, including site development, building plans, marketing materials, and investigating environmental implications or impediments in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, let Teresa have one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Second, facilities planning as related to strategic planning, seeking a motion to authorize administration to negotiate and enter into a master planning agreement with Nexus Solutions.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Third, this is the adoption of the restated trust and custody agreement with BMO Harris Bank and appointment of BMO Harris Bank as trustee and custodian for the Wausau School District OPEB assets held in the CISA VI Wisconsin OPEB Trust. Seeking a motion to accept the modified Wisconsin OPEB Trust and Custody Agreement and appointing the trustee as custodian by approving the presented adopting resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Fourth, adoption of the Investment Advisory Agreement and appointment of PMA LLC as Investment Manager for the Wausau School District OPEB Assets held in the CISA VI Wisconsin OPEB Trust. Seeking a motion to accept the modified Wisconsin OPEB Advisory Agreement by approving the presented adopting resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next, on to item C, number one, Policy thirteen hundred, Public Participation in Board Meetings. I am seeking a motion to approve of revisions of Policy thirteen hundred, Public Participation in Board Meetings, as well as the public comment sign-in sheet.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So now we allow public participation in all board meetings, not just the regular board meeting. Okay, moving on, two thousand nineteen twenty Wausau School District Employee Handbook Updates. Seeking a motion to approve of revisions to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Wausau School District Employee Handbook, including the two thousand nineteen twenty base wage adjustment of two point four eight percent for the administration, Administrative and Educational Support Group, the Maintenance and Custodial School, Custodial Group, School Nutrition Services Group, and the Municipal Group as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay, on to agenda item nine, Committee Updates and Board Referrals. First item, Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee Update.
I just wanted to bring before you tonight an update of the work of the Human Growth and Development Advisory Committee. At this point, the group has kind of come to a consensus as to areas in which need to be updated, enforced, whatever you might wanna call it. First of all, standardization of the curriculum as much as possible between the schools. We've noticed that between high schools, there's a slight difference, but sometimes even between teachers, there's a difference. We wanna make this as concrete as possible that all students receive the same. The same thing at our middle school. One of the things that's become very evident is that at the elementary level, we do have programs mostly at the fifth grade level, but it can be different based on the school and on the teacher's comfort level with dealing with the, the subject matter. So one of the things that the committee is, is very, very firm on is having a K-five curriculum that can be implemented, whether that's having counselors do that, whether that's having teachers do that. But it, it's very apparent that we need something beginning earlier and we can't wait until we get to middle school to have it, have it started. We have a couple of our middle school health teachers who worked on this a few years ago and are going to look at updating and seeing if we can bring that forward. So other things that need to be updated, human trafficking needs to be implemented at both middle and high school. We need to, to alert our students to the human trafficking issue. Addressing the escalating problem of pornography. And here, we actually need to begin in the upper levels of elementary, the upper grades of elementary, and then continue it on through the middle school and the high school with age-appropriate material because it's becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And what's happening is students are thinking what they see in pornography is, is reality and it's anything but reality. So that's something that needs to be done. Continued reinforcement of the message of sexual risk avoidance. You know, we, we talk about the only sure way is absence and we want to make our students as fully aware as possible to the risks that they face. Understanding of sexual abuse and how to report suspected abuse. Again, this is something that if you watch the news as of late, is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And again, this is something that needs to start down at the lower elementary grades and then be brought up through the others. One of the great things that is going to happen along with that is this fall in September, I believe it's September ninth, we are having a Mike Damritz, Damritzer, who is, he's the person who founded the Center for Respect. He does talks all over the world and he's coming in with his Date Safe Project to talk about teaching teens the skills they need to prevent sexual abuse. And it's gonna be offered to both Wausau East and Wausau West on that day in September. So that's one of the good things that has already happened since our last meeting. Another thing, there needs to be a frank and open conversation about the LGBTQ community, what it is, so that students are aware. Greater explicit instruction on the idea of consent, what that means and what it doesn't mean, because that's one of the biggest issues we have at the high school level is that idea of consent. Continual reinforcement of universal respect, kindness, and equity for all students, as well as looking at the family unit and saying, you know, when you have a solid family unit, some of these other problems tend to disappear. And so I know through our Family Consumer Science classes, they're doing more work on the family. The other thing that came forward, which I think is an excellent idea, is development of a webpage that contains resources for students but also for parents. So when parents wanna talk to their students, they have something because that's where we'd like it to take place. It should take place in the home. Unfortunately, it often doesn't and so it's left up to the school to do. So if we can provide parents with some of those resources to say, you know, here's, here's a way you can talk about this at home, it would be great. We also thought then on that webpage, we could have an overview of the entire Human Growth and Development Curriculum from little on up, so that parents know what's being taught at every grade level. We will have, continue to have curriculum available for people to look through the entire thing. But at this point, we feel it's important that now our health teachers and some of our healthcare professionals have the opportunity to spend some time working. And so what we'd like to do is give them the summer. We're gonna carve out some curriculum funds for those teachers to work on this over the summer. They would then reconvene the entire Human Growth and Development Committee in the fall to share what they have come up with and then eventually bring it to the Board of Education for final approval.
Couple of questions, Tom. So after that initial fall meeting, when would you anticipate that the committee would meet again? I mean, is this something that the committee is gonna meet just in the fall, twice through the academic year, more?
Well, it, it kinda depends on when everything is ready to be brought back and we're hoping that's by the start of school. We would reconvene the Human Growth and Development Committee to share, these are the things that have been brought forward and here's what we've developed. Hopefully at that time, the committee will give its approval and then it would immediately move forward to the Board of Education for approval.
All right, thanks. A second question I have is, so the third bullet point says inclusion of new and updated material. Which of those items in the sub-bullet points are new?
New would be human trafficking, the escalating problem of pornography, understanding sexual abuse, although that's covered, but it's limited, so there needs to be more there. The frank and open conversation about the LGBTQ community, because that's something that hasn't been there before and we're thinking it's something that probably should be. Again, like you see, greater, greater explicit instruction. We talk about consent a lot. Our teachers do a great job, but you can never have too much.
Sure.
And so it's, it's putting even more on that.
Sure, and consent, that's something you can start teaching. I mean, I teach my son about consent in, in different ways and he's, you know, second grade. So last question I have is, I had heard a concern that there are community members that are participating in the, this instruction. Is that accurate or is it, or is it just our teachers that are teaching this material?
At the high school level, they invite community organizations to come in and present. The, the women's community sends people in, I can't remember the name of it. Lee, what's the name of the organization with?
Hope Life Center, I think is one of them.
Well, Hope Life Center is one. What's the other one though? They changed their name.
They changed their name.
Something first.
First Health.
First Health, yes.
First Health. But these are, these are professionals that come in and do this, as well as we have doctors from both Asphyrus and Marshfield who are involved, especially at the elementary level. Sherri.
So what level is that decision made at for these outside organizations? Is that made by the department, by the school principal?
It's usually, it's usually made by the teaching staff, but with the knowledge of the principal and then the department that they're going to be speaking.
I think that's an important question though that you just raised, because if we've got a curriculum, we don't know what part, what's being presented by the outside groups is, is their part in it, there's no way to, to really assess it accurately unless there's some kind of outline that they're presenting.
I think we need to do a much better job vetting those people.
Central administration does vet.
Right, and that was one of the suggestions, is that anyone who's going to come in and present on Human Growth and Development should be vetted before they're ever allowed to walk into this.
But we have to define what that vetting means. Are they really a health organization or are they not? Do they have a hidden agenda or not-so-hidden agenda? And those things need to be looked at. This is a different subject than math or...
For example, I know Dr. Mathias, who's employed by Marshfield Clinic, does a presentation on the whole pornography issue. That's one of the things that our teachers are gonna wanna take a look at sometime because if, if he has a good presentation, why would we reinvent the wheel?
But we have to remember, Dr. Mathias came and spoke against our transgender students during that episode.
So, that particular presentation has not been approved by the teachers? You may have vetted him as a speaker, but did, but was there the opportunity to actually review the presentation beforehand?
I, you know, I have to, I, I can't speak to that. I know that he has come in and spoken to some of our schools before and I'm sure that they have seen it.
You want me to do the...
Sure.
Well, he's commented that he's often been the only adult in the room.
So I'm Patty Zemke, I'm the lead secondary health teacher. I teach the sixth grade at Near Ends Man. Dr. Mathias comes into the sixth grade class and just, just talks about the growth of the baby and development and making sure that during the development of the baby, that the mother remains drug-free and, you know, asks questions and answers questions about puberty. So he doesn't go into the high school, yet.
Yet.
He said that he would like to put a presentation for pornography together and he would like to be one that presents on it, but we haven't even gotten there yet, so there isn't...
And that's why our teachers need the time to sit down together and work through all these... all these.
Right. So I guess is it, does it exceed the scope of the committee to approve any non-district employee presentations beforehand?
No, I wouldn't think it would. You know, and I think it would be a good idea when everything is brought back for people to have the ability to see all the presentations.
And one of the goals for our health education is to just give the facts without any bias information. So the people that, when we ask who's vetted to come in, it's somebody that doesn't have an agenda on swaying our students one way or the other. They're just there teaching the facts of certain topics.
Well, speaking just as myself, I would feel more comfortable if, because of the nature of this topic, we have non-district employees, if the committee could review those presentations in advance and provide feedback or address any concerns and hopefully if it is just fact-based, there aren't going to be any.
Right, and anyone that wants to come in usually sends us their information and we met with them and we don't just have someone come in because they say they want to.
Well, I think it's important that a staff member be in the room when those presentations are being done.
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, Dr. Mathias said he was the only adult in the room on occasion.
At the middle?
I think it was at the elementary level.
Oh, okay, because I'm always with them when he's...
No, I think it was, he was talking about the fifth grade one.
Yeah, and I think that's, again, that's one of the reasons that we need to have a consistent curriculum for our elementary schools.
Sure.
I appreciate what you said. That makes a lot of things a little bit more clear.
Thanks.
Jane, do you have any, anything to add on this committee?
I think we worked really hard and made a lot of effort, but it will come out when we get presented. It's an advisory committee. We can take it all or we can reject it all or anywhere in between. So I think when it, when we get to the point where we can look at what the new curriculum is going to be, I think that's when we'll have the most...
Sure. So you're the only board member on that? And then how, what is the makeup of the committee? Is it mostly teachers, principals or...?
Well, it's by law, we have, let Tom answer, he's better than I am.
You have to have students, teachers, administrators, parents, school board members, clergy, healthcare professionals. Those need to be part of it. And just recently, they updated the law to now determine percentages that didn't use to be there. But now it's, you can have no more than X number percent represent, for example, the school district. So if you think you have four teachers and one school board member and an administrator and it's 25%, that means that at the very minimum, your committee has to be 24 people. And my experience has been anything past 12, you begin to have difficulty coming to consensus.
Right.
So that's one of the issues we face.
And we have some of our committee members in there.
We do, we have some of our committee members.
The best student representatives.
I've attended a number of the, a number of the meetings just as an observer and I'm impressed with the fact that, that we, it's gotten to the point where it's going back with some content and curriculum that we can kind of take, that we can take a look at and specifically review it because the initial meetings, it was, there just wasn't a really solid format. So the pause, I think, and some of the material and the questions that are up here are important ones. I am concerned that we really need to focus on the importance and I was appreciative what you said about family structure and the function of family and relationship with family. There's certainly by law, a necessity to be talked about, abstinence as being the only really safe way to avoid it for sexual risk avoidance. And there are some questions about the nature, I have questions about the nature of the material that would be presented and at what level with regard to the LGBTQ question because that is oftentimes related as a feelings question and has not been addressed necessarily in the old curriculum. It's been, things of the district leaves a very straight biological presentation. So I'm excited about the fact that it's going back to a committee, we're going to get some nice, we get a clearer...
I'm glad to see that frank and open conversation about the LGBTQ plus community is added. It's long overdue and I'm surprised it's taken this long. Thank you. Any other questions?
I had a couple of comments. I can remember when we had the FAWSCIENCE and one of the problems with FAWSCIENCE is teachers thought it was messy, took too long to get set up and so they just shelved it. They didn't teach it. So those particular places, there were big gaps in science because people weren't teaching it because of the reasons I just mentioned. So when we come up with the curriculum, then we have to figure out a place where people feel comfortable. And so if it goes to the guidance counselors, great, but it has to be consistent. So that's concerning to me. And then family, what constitutes family? You know, today, it doesn't always mean a mother and a father. It sometimes means a grandmother and a mother or sometimes a family means a grandmother and a grandfather that's raising the grandchild. So, you know, there's a broad definition of family and that's certainly, I'm sure it's something you're talking about, but I just think that that's important, that there's all kinds of families.
Exactly, and the focus is on a stable household.
Great, thank you.
And that goes back to what I said at our last meeting about training. I mean, it needs to become part of the university experience for our teachers and we have to do some professional development around that area if we're going to be asking teachers to teach this. They have to find a way to get comfortable.
Yeah, if it's in your job, you do it.
Right.
Whether you want to.
And we have to address that when we hire teachers too. You're going to be expected to teach this, can you? If not, maybe District B is for you.
If, if we decide that that's the best method to present it. Because you might end up with a decision that says it'd be better to train a subset of employees that can consistently teach it in every room as opposed to having 800 teachers teach it differently.
Possibly board members.
Yeah. So it might be, it might be, you know, it might not be that every single teacher does it. Maybe it's better off to have a small group.
You know, I'm talking about when you're hiring a teacher for a set job and if that's in that job description.
I think the principals all want to teach.
I think so too.
Yeah.
You would think that now.
All right, any other comments, questions or concerns for Tom on this committee update?
Thanks for all the time, Tom. One of the things that I just want to, you know, with my retirement impending here shortly, I've already talked to Paul, my replacement, and said that I would be willing to come back and continue to work with the group to bring it to conclusion or until he's up to speed. One of the reasons for doing this now was that I didn't think it was fair for somebody new coming into the district to have to start this. So if that's okay with the board, I'll probably just do that this fall and then...
Sked out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, onto item B, board appointments to committees. So I am tasked with appointing board members to four committees. I had requested that anybody interested submit an email indicating their interest and their reason for the interest. I'll also take any oral interest as there wasn't a huge amount of interest for some of these committees. So starting with the first one, WK Consortium Committee, I only heard from one board member who sounded a little reluctant.
You know, when I got appointed to that committee, maybe six years ago, I don't know, I've been through three tech people, I was told it was going to meet twice, that would be it. So I don't know, seven years, eight years later, and it's, it's fine, I, you know, and it meets at three o'clock and I never give any money away, I let John do that. And I'm only, and the only reason we need a board member there is we have to have a quorum. And so I'm glad to stay on it, but if anyone wanted it, it would be okay.
Okay.
We typically have a meeting about every other month.
Okay, so that committee meets fairly often, about every other month.
Is that a committee we really do need a board member on?
Well, it's for the quorum in case there's somebody, well, I, no, maybe, maybe you could have another tech person, John. Or is it written that a board member has to be...
I would have to take a look at the bylaws. I don't know if it says a board member should. The district is a founding member of the CAM. We've typically not had difficulty getting a quorum, even with vacations.
That's right.
Well, we have it as an agenda item, so I think we do need to make the appointment and if we want to have a discussion about eliminating that, that would be a separate Is there any other interest? Because I'm hearing Teresa's saying she'll do it, but she'll also step aside.
There we go.
Okay, hearing none, I'll appoint Teresa Miles to the WK Consortium Committee. Second is the Union Contract Negotiating Committee. This, two to three individuals can be appointed to this. I only heard from one individual interested in serving. Is there any other interest?
I'm always happy to do it.
Okay, any other interest, two to three? All right, hearing none, I'll appoint Beth Martin and Jane Roche to the Union Contract Negotiating Committee. Third, Human Growth and Development Committee. This was the committee that Tom Hahn just provided the update on. Jane has been serving on it. I heard interest from two individuals. Is there any other interest in serving on this committee?
Who are the two individuals?
Jane and Lee. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to appoint Jane Roche to continue serving on the Human Growth and Development Committee. Finally, Gifted and Talented Committee. I only heard from one individual. Is there any other interest in serving on that committee?
How often does that one meet? Twice a year do they meet?
Three times a year during the school day. Twice in the morning and once in the afternoon. And it's all morning or all afternoon.
Okay, hearing none, I'll appoint Jane Roche to the Gifted and Talented Committee. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Do any board members have any professional growth and development for the month to report?
I think we put it all down on our sheet. Lots of graduations.
So I'm going to enter that in presiding officer commentary, but if we're talking about the liaison report at this point, does anybody have anything they want to highlight? There's lots of graduations, lots of cookie deliveries, lots of attending other things. Anybody have anything they want to highlight? And actually, if I may, Teresa, may I just share your delivery experience or would you share it?
Well, I got a garment step counter and, you know, I had to go to the peer group on Thomas. So I didn't want to ruin my car and I don't make good driving decisions when I have to make detours. So I parked my car at Social Services on Thomas and I am a rule follower. So I was walking down the bridge and I was walking on the side with the sidewalk and halfway down I thought, oh, this was a bad decision because there were these huge embankments. And then at the end of those was a big digger. So I thought, oh, I better not do that. So I put the cookies, the bananas and the thank you note on the risers, scooted over and then proceeded to walk in the mud to the peer group that's on Thomas. And then I realized after I'd gone through several people's yards that there was an alley so I could take the alley and safely get there. And I was greeted very nicely and I got back and it was two miles, 2.3 miles. So I got a lot of stealth in and I said, now that was an adventure.
And how many cookies did you deliver there?
Three cookies and three bananas.
She started with nine.
Well, it was a long walk.
So I'm sorry, Teresa, I had to point that out because you really went above and beyond. I might have called a cab for delivery or something, I don't know. Anybody else have anything they want to share, highlight from any of these activities?
Well, Teresa, Tricia, I stopped at her house this week and found out that they do a clap out at Riverview. I'd never been to it and I went today and it was fabulous. The fifth graders march around in the halls and everybody claps for them and high fives and all the parents and all the other students and the staff, it was wonderful.
Yeah, I'll have to say, so my son's in second grade, the first time I went was in kindergarten and you line the halls, you clap for the students, all the students are out, the teachers are out, parents, guardians, normally music plays, I don't know Mr. Place, what happened today? We didn't hear the music. It's okay, the students run through the hall and I actually, I'll just share one of my things. I actually went to that because that was a priority for me, but I was invited to a lunch with Lieutenant Governor Mandela Barnes to start at 11:30. The clap out was at 11:25, so I said, I'm going to be late, I've got to go to the clap out. And then I had this very brief lunch with Lieutenant Governor Mandela Barnes. I started off sitting very far from him, I ended up sitting right next to him so I could advocate for the Wassa School District, tell him the efforts that we've undertaken as it relates to special education funding and the message that we sent through resolutions a few months back, talk to him about our desire to improve equity in the district. I was, but you know, I was talking to somebody that understood, I needed to be talking to somebody that needed to change their minds a little more. So I think, I'll just share that. One other thing I'll share is just in terms of community engagement, I've been working long and hard on getting Indigenous Peoples' Day recognized. Had the proclamation last fall, last month, the Marathon County Board of Supervisors passed it unanimously. I've been working on that with them since December. There will be an inaugural Central Wisconsin Indigenous Peoples' Day, Powell, October 12th and 13th at Wassa West Field House. If there is any kind of educational component that can be worked into that, professional learning or otherwise, I'm giving you the dates, save the date. I hope everybody will come, it's open to the public and it's free. Anything else to share? Okay. All right, superintended commentary.
Nothing there at this time.
Okay, back to me. I know you don't want to hear me say anything anymore, but I just have just a couple of quick things. So before I enter the liaison report to the record, I checked my mail on Saturday, this is for the full board, I checked my mail on Saturday and this was there. And I was looking and I said, oh, look at that, there's nine people on that cover. So I thought for a minute and followed a moment of inspired thought, reached out to the publisher and I said, what would you think about featuring the Wassa School Board? There's a lot of misconception on our role, confusing us with administration or not even aware that we exist at all. Within not even five minutes, I got a reply. It said we could feature it in the September issue with a photo shoot in August. So I said, well, let me take it to the full board and see if there's interest in doing that.
Okay, and I can't see it from here, who are they?
It's Wassa Neighbors, it's the monthly publication.
Okay. We don't get that.
Oh, you know.
I have no idea.
Never seen it before.
Never seen it.
Never seen it?
Oh. Well, is there interest because, oh, and I will remind everybody of our code of ethics that includes things such as being visible in the community and informing the community on board activities. So this is a great way to do it.
Do they just want to send somebody to, just do it at a board meeting, get a picture of everybody? Are they sending somebody to take the photo or what?
Well, they said it would be a photo shoot. I can certainly follow up and give them our August dates and go from there and hopefully everybody will be present for that.
This looks more of a, like a rural setting.
Well, that one does.
Well, this is the County Park Recreation Forestry Department, we could sit in desks or something.
Out by the bell.
Okay, so am I, am I hearing support that I can follow through with this?
That's a great idea.
Okay, all right, so that's one thing. The second thing is with presiding officer commentary, just want to extend a huge congratulations once again to the class of 2019 from the full board. Want to thank all the teachers and administration for an awesome academic year and also want to thank Dr. Hiltz for getting us through academic year. Yeah, we'll have more of a discussion in a couple of weeks, but right now we're glad that you're here, hope it feels like home and thank you for helping move us forward.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I will ask that the report, the board liaison report be entered into the official record and I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So vote.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Intention? Motion carries.